Order, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro. Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertoni.
Here.
And Mayor Moy.
Here. Our invocation tonight will be presented by Pastor Vernon Burrows from the Community United Methodist Church. Hello Pastor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to the City Council, to the members that are present. Bring your greetings from the Community United Methodist Church. This is my own paid political announcement, 1875 Fairfield Avenue.
(laughing) I love that.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we are coming together before you this evening to conduct the business of the city of Fairfield. Grant us wisdom, grant us courage for the facing of this hour and for the days and the weeks and the years to come. We need you now, Lord, in this place as we make decisions that will impact the lives of the people in the various districts. Help us to set aside personal agendas and biases and to focus on the greater good for our community. And may the discussions be marked by respect, open-mindedness, and a genuine desire to find common ground for the betterment of our community. We pray for unity and peace and harmony among us, recognizing that collaboration and teamwork are essential for effective governance. Give us the humility to listen to one another, to consider the difference of opinion. We need you now, Lord, and as we find solutions that promote the well-being of this flourishing community, we ask that you would give us the victory. And as we come together in this meeting, let us not forget those who are marginalized, disenfranchised, misused, and abused and disadvantaged or in need, but help us to be mindful of their struggles and to work towards creating a city that is inclusive, just, and compassionate. And we offer this prayer in your holy name, trusting that you hear and answer our petitions. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray, and we thank you for the victory right now, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much Pastor. And I'm going to ask Councilman Vicaro to lead us again in the pledge.
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're going to go ahead to council reports and we're going to start with Councilman Doug.
Well, I'll keep this real brief, Mayor. The Fairfield PD Public Safety Academy crowd feed, which I joined you at, at your table, was fabulous.
I was at your table.
Well, the table. And it just was really good to see all those people in there, all for the good cause, and the food was wonderful. If you haven't attended that, you want to get your tickets next year because I got to tell you, the tri-tip, everything, it's fabulous. We're going to have some busy stuff coming up here in the next few months. I don't have much more than that, other than just to save the date, Saturday and Sunday, March 16th, 17th, out at the base, they got the airshow going, so you're going to want to go out and check out that. The Blue Angels are coming.
You bet.
So that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Thanks for joining in from home. We always appreciate it, and thank you Pastor for the invocation. We always appreciate it when you take time out of your busy day to join us for these meetings. And I don't really have a report this evening. I will just say happy election day for the primary election, and it should be some interesting results when we get home. That's it. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. And Councilman Vicaro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to echo what the Vice Mayor said, you know, I wish everybody luck who's running, well, almost everybody.
(laughing)
No, I do. I mean, I didn't know, I just wanted to say that, you know, it takes a lot of courage to run, no matter how you feel about us up here, anybody else who's running, you put yourself out there and you're just, you're out there on an island. And, you know, you just have to deal with it. So I really do wish everybody luck. And like I said, it's one of those nights where if you're running, you just want it to end as soon as possible. So.
Absolutely. And Councilman Tonison, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. We had a grand opening digital stitch this week, had a great turnout. Barb and Lisa were wonderful, Lisa's the new owner, or they both still own it. But I just want to give a shout out because the mayor showed, myself, Doris, and then Amit, Powell from Sassoon, Greg Ritchie, the Vice Mayor of Vacaville, Chris Matthews, one of our planning commissioners, and Don Greavy, another one of our planning commissioners. So just want to give them all a shout out that, you know, we're all coming together, planning commissioners are getting out and getting to some of these ribbon cuttings, and that's something I'm really happy with. And then again, on Chadbourne Road, we had a grand opening, I forget the name of the building, David, but it's 205,000 square foot of industrial, beautiful building. David and myself showed up along with Councilmember Williams and Planning Commissioner George Kennedy, Planning Commissioner Don Greavy. Again, just a shout out to them. I appreciate everybody coming together and, you know, all of us, all of us being a one big team, so thank you all.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to assure the community that I am aware of attacks on my integrity and my character that some of the community members have received, and to let everyone know that these issues will be addressed outside of this council setting. I was reminded of a term, a legal term, defamation per se, and it involves the false statements that constitutes defamation of character. It's accusations of criminal or immoral conduct or harmful comments about one's business, trade, profession, and that only is it hurtful, but that's illegal. While I may not have much, my integrity and dedication to my role on this council as a business owner, as a community leader, is beyond reproach. And I will continue to lead with integrity and compassion. So in response to these recent events, I thought it was imperative, with some calls that I got, I thought it was imperative for me to shed light on some invaluable resources for all small businesses, particularly in Fairfield, because small businesses play such an integral role to the city of Vallejo. So there's a few resources that I wanted to highlight. One of my favorites, Solano Napa Small Business Development Center, offers free, high-quality business consulting and advisory services. They serve multiple counties, but they're located right here in Fairfield. NorCal PTAT is now the NorCal Apex. It divides government contracting assistance for small business. I also want to, it seemed like I saw Fairfield Sassoon Chamber here, so I'm going to shout you all out. You really offer some valuable resources and networking opportunities for small business. And can I just say that the Fairfield Sassoon Chamber, you all have like this cool vibe. So I really love rocking with you guys. Finally, I want to lift one other program. It is a new program that small business owners are, should be very excited about. It's called the Solano Biz Grow Small Business Loan Program. It was recently launched by Solano EDC. It offers small business loans ranging from $25,000 to $125,000 at a 6% interest rate. But time is the essence on this program. Once the money, it's a revolving loan, but really, once the money runs out, they have to replenish it. So if you want more details or access to these resources, I'll post them on my Facebook page. Also posted on my City Council website, kpatriceforfairfield.com. It'll be in the resources section as of tomorrow morning. And thank you, Mayor. My report is now complete.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate you and what you said tonight. I am just going to tell people that you still have time to run and vote if you haven't yet. But if you're here to hear about Court or any of the other lovely things that we're going to talk about, then you are not excused to go vote. But they're open until 8 o'clock tonight, so if you haven't voted, go on down. It is important. And just one other thing, I'm not going to get into a lot of details about it, but I sit on the Solano Transportation Authority, and we are soon, we and the state are soon going to be building a new truck facility, truck, not a truck stop, but a truck scales, basically, where 1,000 cars and trucks an hour are going to go through. You could, that'll probably break ground this summer if everything goes well. So I just wanted folks to know that that was coming. Right now, some, there's some issues going on between some of the landowners. They need to take some land, some eminent domain, and so that's being worked on right now. So once that gets through, then the money is all there. We got it through the state, and just wanted you to know that. So I'll go to the City Manager.
No report this evening, Madam Mayor, and no changes to the agenda.
Oh, well, that was easy. How about you, Mr. City Attorney?
No report. Thank you.
No report. And Madam Clerk, report.
Yes. I just wanted to thank the 60th Civil Engineer Squadron from Travis Air Force Base. They brought 20 to 25 volunteers to our recent trash mob at Allenwood Park, and they collected 27 bags of trash, so shout out to them. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
That's awesome. I just want to say to you, Madam Clerk, you do a great job and have for a long time on getting people to come up and volunteer and adopt our streets. We have a lot adopted, and you did the parks too, so I just wanted to tell you how we all are so happy with what you do there. We appreciate you. You're welcome. All right. I feel nice tonight. Aren't we lucky? Okay. Now we're going to turn to presentations, and the first, want to go ahead, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Presentation one, Proclamation Declaring National Women's History Month, presented by Vice Mayor Pam Bertoni to our former mayor, Corinne McMillan.
And I'm especially honored to be reading this proclamation to a lady who is not only a great leader, but I am blessed to call her my friend, so.
And I did also want to just say that our Fairfield poet laureate, Suzanne Bruce, will also read a poem for the occasion.
Thank you. All right.
That's for you, my friend.
Whereas in 1978, Women's History Day began in Sonoma County, California, and was championed by Gerda Lerner and the National Women's History Alliance to be recognized as a national week in 1980, and then be recognized as National Women's History Month in 1987 in the United States, then spreading internationally after that. And whereas National Women's History Month is celebrated annually in March, the theme for 2024 is women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion, and also includes International Women's Day, which is March 8th, a global day celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, women also served as early leaders in the forefront of every significant progressive social change movement. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Whereas women have continued to play a critical role in economics by constituting a significant portion of the labor force and have served a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force, the majority of the volunteer labor force. And whereas women were essential in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions, and whereas women are natural-born leaders, and serve our country courageously in the military, law enforcement, first responders, and public service. And whereas Corinne McMillan was elected and served as Fairfield's first female mayor from November 2001 to 2005, after serving six years as a city council member. Now therefore, Catherine Catmoy, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, hereby proclaims the month of March as National Women's History Month, and the mayor asks our citizens to celebrate the multitude of women's contributions to our community and the world at large, and to celebrate their strength, courage, and wisdom. Mayor Corinne McMillan, would you like to say a few words?
Of course she would.[1070.26][1070.26](laughing) First of all, it's an honor to be asked. I appreciate being able to represent the women in history, and it's a great honor and a blessing to have been able to serve this community and to serve as mayor. I wish you well. Thank you.[1089.23][1089.23](applause)
And now Suzanne can read the poem.
Suzanne, one second. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay. I'm coming down. I'll take a picture and then you can... The two mayors of female gender ever, right here.
Ready?
Just the beginning.
And one, two, three. And one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. What an honor to be in the presence of these two wonderful women. Good evening, Mayor Moy, councilmembers, and audience. I'm honored to read this poem for Women's History Month. This month, I chose a form of poetry called a shinto. A shinto is Latin for patchwork. A shinto poem is made up of passages from other poems, and you put them together to make a new poem. Since I have written 14 poems specifically for Women's History luncheons, I took two or more lines from each of those 14 poems to make this poem. And it's in honor of women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion. My shinto is entitled Courage Unmasked. Motivated minds unearth history with eyes of wisdom. Shifting stones from untraveled roads craft a path of equal opportunity. Unmask the myth that women lack the capability of intellectual respect. Persistence seeks to swim out of a stagnant pool of resistance. Insistence propels, teaching adversity need not drown dreams. A copper-streaked sky, morning light births insight. Ride storm so young girls can see their rights. A rainbow cannot glow without rain. Trekking through mud of then and now, cultivating a garden from seeds, blossoming new possibilities. When appearance and obedience are no longer the norm, when equality replaces glamour and knowledge becomes genderless, the landscape rebalances. Her pledge of dedication, a book of innovative thought, commentary her own, a story that belongs to all. And wisdom that is passed on is not the language sought, but the meanings. Words like unseen wind billow with confidence, the past hovering, taking ideas back at a time when our votes count the most, a courageous journey to empower civil liberties. Energetic waters do not churn by compliance, but by questions and actions. She, an ocean not consumed by waves, does not get caught in undertow, fosters ebb and flow into strength. This entwinement of passion and purpose, unafraid ambitions, radical sparks must go beyond just kindling. Flamed hearts of sisterhood unite, because a phoenix cannot rise if there is no fire.
Next presentation, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Proclamation Declaring American Red Cross Month, presented by Councilmember Scott Tonison to Vincent Velazuela. He's the executive director of the American Red Cross North Bay Chapter, and Robbie Gaines, disaster program manager, and volunteer Alzinea Palin.
Thank you. American Red Cross Month, March 2024. Whereas in times of crisis, people in Fairfield come together to care for one another. The humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by the American Red Cross volunteers and donors. March is American Red Cross Month, so we recognize the compassion of people in Fairfield and the honor, the kindness, and our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day as they carry out the organization's 143-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas last year in Solano County, 146 Red Cross volunteers helped 118 families affected by home fires, providing emotional support, addressing immediate needs, and helping families recover with emergency financial assistance or community resources. Whereas, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who led with their hearts to serve other peoples in need, and we ask that everyone join in the commitment to strengthen our community. Now there, I, Catherine Catmoy, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens to reach out and support this organization and notable humanitarian mission. Would you like to say a couple of words, Suzanne? Thank you so much.
Good evening. I just want to pass along a thank you to the council, to the mayor, the city of Fairfield, the citizens for recognizing Red Cross and honoring us with this proclamation. We cannot fulfill our mission of alleviating human suffering without these community heroes, so thank you for that. A couple of quick, thought-provoking questions before I step away. Did you know that every eight minutes across the nation, a Red Cross volunteer responds to a disaster? That disaster could be the ones you see on TV, or the small home fires I was mentioning in the proclamation. Every eight minutes across the nation, that happens. The need is blood, the need for blood is consistent, as we all know. One in seven patients entering a hospital will need a blood transfusion. So I encourage you, if you're able to, donate if you're able, or even host a blood drive at your organization. Red Cross volunteers provide 24/7 global support for our military families. They're service veterans and people coming back from military combat. Obviously, very relevant for us here in Solano County and Fairfield with Travis Air Force Base in our backyard. So I encourage you to join us, turn your compassion into action, visit redcross.org, and join us on this mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1504.63][1504.63](applause)
And our last presentation, Proclamation Declaring Court Day, presented by Mayor Catherine Moy.
All right, bring my boyfriend up. That's Court, just so we're clear. Hi, Court.
Hi.
All right. So I call him my boyfriend, and he is, and we don't live together, of course, because my husband wouldn't like it, but anyway. He probably would. He likes Court, too. So here's the proclamation. This is a real honor for me. It's also sad. I've been sad since Court retired, but I'm happy for him and happy that he survived all the horrible things that happened to him. Whereas canine Court, go ahead and say his name, what, Malin Shekostatku? Court was born on March 10th, 2014, in the Czech Republic to two German Shepherd Czech police dogs named Bad and Betty. The Fairfield Police Department acquired Court and partnered him with Officer Michael Pena, now sergeant, a week before his first birthday, not Mike's Courts. Whereas Court and his partner attended a one-month patrol canine school in March of 2015, followed by a six-week explosive detection school, two-week tracking and trailing school, one-week SWAT canine school, and one-week advanced patrol tactics school. And whereas, for the past eight years and nine months, Court has served as a dual-purpose police dog, searching for dangerous criminals and sniffing out explosives and firearms. Whereas, as the department's senior canine, Court has participated in approximately 2,000 hours of training to become a proficient force multiplier and de-escalation tool. Court has safely executed hundreds of searches for violent criminals and has physically restrained dozens of combative assailants. Good boy. And whereas canine Court has assisted neighboring agencies in searching for violent criminals, including conducting yard-to-yard searches in the city of Davis for Davis Police Officer Natalie Corona's killer, completing explosive detection searches for visiting presidential candidates, and assisting in dozens of SWAT operations. While searching for a parolee at large, canine Court was deployed along with police officers to search residents. Court pushed through a partially-opened bedroom door, deploying a booby trap from above, which due to his quick movements, he avoided injury and therefore protected officers from serious injury. In January 2019, is this guy, is this guy not a stud? I'm telling you. Canine Court was searching a heavily-breathed creek bed for a wanted dangerous criminal in the city of Vacaville. Court and his handler were ambushed, with Court suffering multiple stab wounds. Officer Pena credits Court with saving his life by demonstrating bravery while subduing the assailant despite his injuries. For his actions, the city of Vacaville proclaimed January 23rd, 2019, as Canine Court Day. And whereas in February 2020, Fairfield SWAT surrounded a home after a male severely beat a woman that night before. A standoff lasted nearly six hours, so Court was deployed to search for the now-concealed suspect, quickly locating him hiding in the garage. During the apprehension, Court suffered a serious through-and-through laceration to his paw. his paw. Then in 2022, Canine Court was deployed into a residence to search for a dangerous criminal after attempts to de-escalate the situation were unsuccessful. During the search, Canine Court was stabbed, and he was bitten in his face. Despite his injuries, Court maintained his grasp of that criminal, preventing him from attacking searching police officers. For his action, Canine Court received a Purple Heart Medal in 2023. He was the first canine in Fairfield's history to get that. Court's career is a story of resilience. Reaching a well-deserved retirement, Canine Court now spends most of his time relaxing poolside, socializing with his companion Riley, and Officer Pena's wife and three children. Although his presence in the Fairfield community is ending, the memory of his life of service to the community will last for years to come. Now, therefore, I, Catherine Cat Moy, mayor of Fairfield and girlfriend of Court, do hereby proclaim March 5, 2024, as Canine Court Day in Fairfield, and we encourage the community to celebrate the many accomplishments that this very special police dog attained, and we wish him a very well-deserved retirement. You'd like your family to come up, please? And I have a couple of things actually I get from Court, but you have to carry them for me. There's that. And then, we have a very special engraved bowl, sniffing out crimes since 2015. And for the first time ever, Canine Court is leading the city. Yeah, okay. Wear it like this. And there you go, that. You guys want to come up and take your picture together? You guys ready? And one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. Here's this. and all the canines in our police department. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor, for having us. Mike, Court, come on back down here. It's about time you let that poor dog retire. I just wanted to add a few things. Sergeant Pena, Court, that's a very impressive resume you guys have racked up the last nine years. Court, even though you have almost nine years of police work under your collar, you look like you're ready to hit the street again. In addition to what Mayor Moy has already said, Court also has the following that I would like to cover. Court has over 2,800 documented training hours, 433 field deployments, 35 suspect apprehensions, over 90 suspect surrenders, multiple activations with the SWAT team, and over 650 events that he's attended. Mike, I know it's tough to leave the best part of you could have in the car with you behind, but as you know, there is unfortunately an end to every great thing. Your hard work and continued dedication to Canine Unit over the past eight-plus years is greatly appreciated, and you'll be missed. You should be proud of what you and Court accomplished out there together. The bar was pushed higher in the Canine Unit because of you. Properly trained police dogs like Court play an integral role in police departments by assisting law enforcement officers in their tireless efforts to maintain public safety. They are not just animals but trusted partners who fearlessly go into dangerous situations, selflessly placing themselves in harm's way to protect communities and officers. Their keen sense of smell, superior agility, and unwavering focus make them invaluable assets in fighting crime. These incredible abilities have not only enhanced the effectiveness of police operations, but have also played a crucial role in saving lives by being a significant de-escalation tool for law enforcement. To put this into perspective, during the last several years, the Fairfield Police Department has deployed canines in the field 880 times to assist with taking suspects into custody. Out of those 880 deployments, suspects peacefully surrendered 293 times with a canine being on scene. We are extremely lucky in this department to have the continued support surrounding the canine program from both our police administration and our city officials. In addition, community members have shown their support over the past year and a half by attending various events put on by our nonprofit Friends of Fairfield Canine, which raises money for retired canines' medical needs. While some agencies have had to downsize or discontinue their programs for different reasons, our department is going in the opposite direction, as Chief Marshall will explain in just a few moments. Counsel, City Manager, Mayor Moy, thank you for supporting the Fairfield Police Department Canine Unit. We appreciate you taking the time to recognize Canine Court and Handler Sergeant Mike Pena for their dedicated service this evening. Chief.
All right. I will try to be quick. Mayor, Council, thank you guys very much for allowing Mike and Court to come and be presented to. Court is a very unique canine. He's been around for a long time. He truly is what we'd call a hero. Not many dogs get a Purple Heart or other awards, but Court continues to just shine and shine. With Court's retirement, we added a fourth dog again. In fact, the handler's in the back, Bianca, raise your hand. She's in Canine School right now with her dog. So, at some point, we'll have him out in the street. And we've also added two more dogs. So, we will have a total of six dogs serving the streets of Fairfield, one per shift. One of our other handlers, our newest handler, she's picking up Nitro tomorrow, is Kim Rodriguez in the back as well. So, Court's left a legacy. They have a lot to live up to. We've got Brightwell in back, too, and Joe, some of our other handlers. So, they have a legacy to live up to, for sure, with Court. He's been an amazing dog, amazing partner. Just, I know we've been tracking legislation. Last year, it got killed. This year, they did not even try to bring it back, confirmed that with Lori Wilson. And we're talking to Lori about actually going on the offensive and having Assembly Member Wilson actually carry a bill for canines in a positive manner going forward for policing. So, a lot more to come in the future. Mike, congratulations. I know this is a hard night for you. So, good job. Take care.
Okay. Now, we're going to go on to public comments. Madam Clerk.
Yes. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone if you're online. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. Thank you. And our first speaker is Theda Peck, to be followed by Rick Johnson.
Can you turn your mic on?
Your mic?
That's the button.
Does it work now? There you go. Okay. I'm starting, I've handed out the presentation that I emailed each of you last Tuesday, the 27th or 27th, and I'm starting on page five. And I'm just going to go over a couple of highlighted items. I should also note that while I sent this a week ago, I have not received any response, phone calls, or email as to the receipt of it and/or my email or phone call, although I've made a couple of phone calls, follow-up phone calls. Basically, this is dealing with the PVMMD, GAD, issue of rebate for the assessment fees that we overpaid for the first 10 years of the GAD's district's lifespan. The lifespan should have been to recreate, to pay into, the fund should be a 40-year lifespan, and we've achieved that level in 12 years. That in itself should be the trigger that this needs to be looked into. And we've repeated it since 2019, and nothing has happened. Right? In my calculations, having all the general ledgers and doing all the math and the spreadsheet and everything, we are nearly $1 million over where we should be for the reserve. That's 59% over where we should be at for the lifespan of this GAD, where it stands right now. 150 parcels have paid 94% of that reserve that's sitting in the bank right now. That's 52% of the people that live in that district have funded 94% of the reserve. That is not equitable in any sense. Between 2010 and 11, fiscal year 10 and 11, and 21, 22, the program expensed a budget, expenses were budgeted at $635,000, and they came in under 67% of that. So, we kept getting, the fees kept getting increased. We kept getting, having to pay over what you actually recommended the budget for. If you had an $85,000 recommended budget, you collected in excess of $100,000. And in one year, I believe it was 2016, you collected double what your recommended budget was, $160-some-odd thousand. So, you're collecting even more what your recommended budget is recommending. There was no reason to increase the assessment fee because we were so below, the expenses and expenditures were so below the recommended budget. The Hillside Agreement basically says that between 2011 and 12 and 15, 16... Your time's up. Okay. We paid for maintenance and operation when we shouldn't have had to do that. We didn't own the property. Thank you. Oh, and we want a rebate. We want this agendized. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rick Johnson, to be followed by Jeff Trager.
Good evening, Mayor Moy. Good evening, Vice Mayor Moy. City Council staff. Now it's working? Thank you. First, thank you very much. As the PVMMD Board, three years ago, you commissioned staff to review expenses and bring tax in line. We were paying $1,000. We had it brought down to 800 by your action alone, and then when the new numbers came out, our tax has dropped to approximately $400, round numbers. The problem is, all the prior years where people were paying $1,000, there were very few expenses. So, the excess money went into a reserve account, not a normal reserve account that you're used to. Reserve accounts that are fat are good, because that means we're ready to take on something. The case of our reserve, it's a budgeted line item. So, it was in the tax to accrue and to grow. As the other expenses did not appear, the money was still being made available for those expenses. Our changes through staff in our new company, that is our expert for GEO, has new numbers that are smaller, and our taxes are less because of that. But that process should have occurred many, many years ago. It did not. So, what we have is almost $1 million of money that has been preloaded that's in there. The money is here. It's in the bank. It's in your investments. It can be returned to those people who gave that money in advance or for expenses that were never realized. And that's the important part. The citizens know that. The residents know that their money was not needed, and it was increased every year. Staff requested a CPI increase every year. So, the citizens are very upset for how it was handled. They're very happy with the change. They're happy with the reduced tax. What they would like to have, as we identified in a steering committee meeting last year, we asked the City Manager and Ryan if they would like to come, but we had a meeting of about a dozen residents, and we talked about, do you want the money back? That means you're going to have to pay a little bit more to get back into the new path. Overwhelmingly, yes. So, we do know people want to have this done. We're asking you to agendize it so that the ad hoc committee can provide information and the residents can make their request to you to please return the excess funds that are above what is needed for the reserve account. So, that's, our request is, please agendize it for a PVMMD meeting that we can then provide additional information. Is there any questions you may have?
Mayor, I ask you a question. So, I've also talked to people out there that said, you know, whatever the number is, just don't charge us for that year, or, you know, have you been getting different options?
We've run the numbers. A full-time, or somebody that's been there since the beginning would be receiving approximately $5,000. It's a huge number.
Wow.
It's very large. They're going to have to increase their tax, and that's the number we have not yet received from NGO, the company, or Ryan. They decided not to run the numbers, but we estimate it to be no more than $100 per year. They will get a $5,000 check. They'll pay $100. Those are not good numbers. That's why we're asking for help, so that our experts can provide the actual numbers. But the interest is what we're trying to demonstrate, that people want it.
Thank you. Your time's up. And just so you know, I've been speaking to the City Manager and the Vice Mayor, and we're going to be talking about this, the three of us, soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And our last speaker, Jeff Trager.
Good to see you all, ladies and gentlemen. This is what's going on at the Downtown Theater on the 16th of this month. We're bringing in a legendary Latin rock band called Mallow. And I'm going to play, they recorded a song called "Suave Sito" back in the '70s, which was actually known as the Chicano National Anthem, one of the great, great songs in the history of Latin music annals. So, I'm just going to play very quickly. The guy who wrote the song is bringing in Mallow, and we're also, also bringing in Los Cochinos out of Vacaville, too. So, there we go. Anyway, that's one of the kind of bands that we'll also be bringing out to our summer music series, which starts in May. I want to thank the city again. We're going out to seven different parks in Fairfield and also coming downtown to the city park. Also, at the Downtown Theater is the Jesus Christ Superstar, which starts on the 13th of April and goes through the 20th... of April and goes through the 21st, and that is an all-female cast, just so you know. So, that's what's going on at Downtown Theater. There's a lot of music coming up this year, and I'll just be keeping everybody apprised. So, thank you for your time.
Did anyone else wish to speak on public comment? I don't have any hands raised online.
All right. So, we'll go to the consent calendar, then?
Consent calendar, all, excuse me, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. And I do not have any cards, request to speak.
Does anybody here wish to speak? Nobody online, Madam Clerk? All right. Thank you. So, I'm going to entertain a motion, then. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm slow on the aye. That was a unanimous vote. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to new business.
Yes, item 13, Resolution 2024-54 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the report of the advisory board for calendar year 2023 and proposed budget for calendar year 2024 in connection with the North Texas Street Business Improvement District, and Resolution 2024-55 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield declaring intention to levy an assessment against businesses within the North Texas Street Business Improvement District for calendar year 2024, and setting a time and place for hearing objections thereto. And our presenter is Dwayne Dolman, Economic Development Manager.
Thank you. I'd have to say it's hard to follow the police dog. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Dwayne Dolman, Economic Development Manager for the city. Tonight, I'm bringing in an item regarding the North Texas Street Business Improvement District. Just as a background, in 1999, the city council established the North Texas Street Business Improvement District and the ability to level assessments within the district. At that time, the council also pointed the North Texas Street Business Association as the advisory board to make recommendations on how the assessment money was to be spent. Each year, the advisory board completes an annual report and holds a public hearing prior to the levying of the assessments. The required report was filed on February 12th with the city clerk's office, showing that approximately $53,000 is anticipated from the assessments in 2024. The money from the assessments will be spent on membership services, beautification projects, recruitment of new businesses, and retention of existing businesses. The advisory board has contracted with the Fairfield-Susun Chamber of Commerce to perform these services. The 2024 assessment amount against each business will remain essentially the same as that originally assessed in 2000. So, tonight, staff recommends that the city council approve the report and budget, as well as declare its intention to levy an assessment against businesses within the North Texas Street Business Improvement District for calendar year 2024. Staff will then come back to the council on March 19th for the public hearing, and to submit for council's review and approval, the contract between the city and the North Texas Street Business Association to provide the activities and services proposed in the Business Improvement District. So, that concludes my questions, or my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have Jared Newmeyer, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, with us tonight.
Any questions? Yes, councilwoman.
So, just to be clear, so the next, if this is approved, the next meeting will have a better, will have a scope of work as to what happens with, with the chamber, what the chamber will do with these dollars to do all of these initiatives?
Yes, that will have the contract, and that will, that spells out the scope of work.
Is that all? Okay. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
I do not. Did anyone wish to speak on this item? Okay, and there are no hands raised online.
All right. So, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, then.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, you should take each resolution separately.
Okay, all right. So, we'll go with Resolution 2024-54 first. So, moved in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That was a unanimous vote. And then on Resolution 2024-55, a motion, please? Got a motion from Rick Vaccaro.
A second.
A second from the vice mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that was unanimous. Thank you. Now, we're going to move to public hearings. Item 14?
Yes, public hearings. Public hearing and first reading and introduction of ordinance 2024-02 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending section 25, 28, 5 of chapter 25, article 1 of the municipal code, also known as the zoning ordinance, to permit selected industrial business park uses for office commercial, North Cordelia Zone properties, south of Business Center Drive, and establish certain design and operating standards. Or second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024-01 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending section 25, 28, 5 of chapter 25, article 1 of the municipal code, also known as the zoning ordinance, to permit selected industrial business park uses for office commercial, North Cordelia Zone properties, south of Business Center Drive, and establish certain design and operating standards. And our presenter is Dave Feinstein, our planning manager.
Good evening, Mayor Moy, members of the council. I'm Dave Feinstein, the city's planning division manager. The next item before you is an item that should be familiar to all of you. It's been before you in various forms multiple times over the last year. The item is a proposal to amend the zoning ordinance to expand allowed uses for a couple of office buildings along Business Center Drive to the west of Costco. The last time this item came before you was just a month ago, on February 5th. At that meeting, you approved the introduction and first reading for the zoning ordinance amendments. We're coming back to you tonight because after that meeting, staff took a look at that item, we realized there was some confusion during the discussion on it. The confusion pertained to some differences between an original staff recommendation and a subsequent recommendation that was made to you by the planning commission. And we realized that we, staff, did not, I think, fully explain to you that planning commission recommendation, and so we wanted to bring this item back to you so that you would have the ability to better consider that planning commission recommendation if you wish to do so. So, what I'm going to do, I'm going to walk you through this item, give you a little bit of background reminder about what we're talking about, explain that difference between that original staff recommendation, which was what was presented to you more in full a month ago, with the difference between that and the planning commission recommendation, and then allow you to decide between those two recommendations, or if you want to look at something else entirely, or some other changes. So, the area in question, as I mentioned, is a couple of office buildings over to the west of Costco, and you can see Costco's right here along Business Center Drive, and there are two sort of L-shaped office buildings just to the west. The owner of this office building here that's surrounded in red, applied to the city for zoning amendments with the intent to essentially allow a range of industrial uses for this office building. The building's been vacant for a number of years, they've had trouble re-tenanting, and so their intent with the request was to expand the range of users who they could be reaching out to, and hopefully re-tenant the building. So, the item was discussed several times by the planning commission. First time it was presented to you, the, I'm sorry, to the city council, the first time it was presented to the council, you decided that you wanted to hold off on any decision until there was a larger discussion of the general plan along Business Center Drive, and make your direction on this item in conjunction with the larger general plan discussion. So, later last year, you had that discussion, and you considered the request of the applicant to expand the uses. And the direction that was given by council on this item was to come back with an ordinance that basically did allow for the expansion of uses. In particular, you noted you'd like to see manufacturing allowed at this site, but with a couple of caveats. First, you did not want to see warehousing, so the direction from council was to not allow warehousing. And second was the direction for no trucks. So, having received that direction from council, staff went back and worked to prepare an ordinance for your, first for the planning commission's consideration as a recommendation, and then to you for adoption. In doing so, you know, the key challenge here was how to allow the expansion of uses to facilitate manufacturing, but at the same time, no trucks. Manufacturing tends to, you know, have some truck activity associated with it. And so, there was a sort of a narrow path to navigate for that. And so, as that ordinance recommendation was put together by staff, ultimately, the recommendation was to keep that underlying zoning, which is an office zoning, but modify an existing overlay zone that sits on top of that base zoning. All of North Cordelia has a special, what we call an overlay zone, that puts special regulations for different areas on the north side of Interstate 80, and we realized that modifying that overlay zone while keeping the underlying office zoning was really the best approach. And so, the ordinance that was presented both to the planning commission and then to you, expanded the allowed uses for not just the one L-shaped building, but both of them. They function as a pair, really, same, all same parking and circulation. So, for that area bounded by the red rectangle, ordinance was presented to you that expanded to allow, in addition to all the office-related and commercial uses with the offices, most of the land uses in our industrial business park zone. And there's a lot of overlap between the uses in that, in those two zones, but notably by adding the IBP zoning uses, you get ware, I'm sorry, not warehousing, you get manufacturing, you get research and development, those more industrial kinds of uses that you do potentially see in a more office-related building. So, the ordinance that was prepared, allowed most of those IBP uses, did not allow warehousing. It allowed manufacturing of various sorts, but it did not allow what we call medium manufacturing, which are manufacturing activities that can put out odors, noise, that kind of thing. This is a, it's a somewhat residential area. You've got residences across Business Center Drive over there. So, restrictions on the medium manufacturing. Certain design regulations to maintain the high architectural character over in that area, that area for various reasons dating back to the 80s and the Cordelia, the Cordelia, the Green Valley Settlement Agreement, has a higher architectural character than other parts of the city, so there are some design regulations to ensure that as changes occur to those buildings, it keeps that character. And then finally, were regulations to address the issue of trucks, which is really the focus for our discussion tonight. So, the regulations, recognizing that if you're going to have manufacturing, you're going to have some sort of truck operations, so it does allow roll-up doors, or the proposed ordinance allows roll-up doors on the backside, you know, as many as you need, but only one on the front side to minimize that visibility from the street, includes restrictions on the hours that trucks can operate over in that area, to ensure that you're not getting the big 18-wheel trucks, if there are any. We can't totally prohibit them, but if they do come over there, there's restrictions on the hours, so it's not occurring morning and evening commute hours, and not occurring during the day on the weekends. And finally, the key focus for tonight is the issue of truck docks. The recommendation from the, as a part of the original staff ordinance that was presented both to the planning commission and to the city council, recommended that no truck docks be allowed for these buildings. Truck docks are those typically depressed facilities that allow a truck to maneuver and then back up and directly load in and out of the building. And the original recommendation was, if the intent was no trucks, to work to ensure that at least the design of the buildings isn't being designed to facilitate big trucks over there. You can still have box trucks and trucks that load with forklifts and things like that, but not really encouraging the large truck activity by having those docks. Staff presented this recommendation to the planning commission. The planning commission heard that. They had a different recommendation. They agreed with everything else that staff recommended, but they recommended four truck docks be allowed for each building. The planning commissions, you know, listened to the public hearing, listened to the applicant's comments on the matter, and concluded that if the intent is to allow manufacturing, manufacturing often has large trucks associated with it, and those trucks are better served by having the truck docks. And so, the planning commission recommended essentially everything that staff recommended, but recommended that you allow four truck docks per building. The staff presentation and the staff report a month ago didn't fully explain that, and so we wanted to come back, make sure that you understood that, give you a chance if you have questions, and allow you to reconsider that topic. So, I'm not going to go in detail on the next slide, it's probably kind of hard to read, but it's got all the details on everything in the proposed ordinance before you. The center column is the bulk of everything, everything that you considered last month. The left side includes a discussion of the actual requests from the applicant. The applicant had noted that, you know, ideally, they don't have design restrictions, they don't have restrictions on hours, but notably, the applicant commented that they would like to see six truck docks for their building. Over on the right is a discussion of the planning commission's recommendation to you, which is everything that the staff recommended, but with the four truck docks. So, with that, and I may ask the city attorney for some guidance on this slide, there may be a slight change to this slide. You essentially have two ordinances before you tonight. Last month, you had one ordinance, which was the no truck docks ordinance. We wanted to make sure that you had an ordinance before you, if you wished, that allowed you to approve the planning commission's recommendation with four truck docks. So, you have proposed ordinance 2024-1, which is the zero truck docks, and proposed ordinance 2024-2, which is four truck docks. If you wish to go with the no truck dock option, that's what you did a first reading, an introduction, last month, so you'd need to essentially just do the second reading, which is to approve that. I believe, because you have two ordinances before you, you also would have to deny that second ordinance, which is ordinance 2024-2. Mr. City Attorney, if that's correct, or if you think they don't need to even act on that one, we can-
Yeah, I'll make it easier. Just pick one.
Just pick one.
You can only pass one.
There you go.
You can pass none or one.
Yeah.
But you can't pass both.
Yeah. So, if you want zero, you would approve 2024-01. If you want four truck docks, you would make a motion to introduce and do a first reading of 2024-2. If you want some other amendments to the ordinance, we can talk about that as well. So, with that, I will conclude my presentation. Because we have another ordinance before you tonight, we do have a fresh public hearing for you to conduct, so happy to take questions, have you hold the public hearing, and deliberate on the item.
And just to clarify what I just said, Mr. Feinstein is correct. So, you actually have three, four options. You can pass one of, pass either one of these ordinance as-is. You can give instructions to staff for amendments to either one, or you can do nothing. So, those are, is that four or three? Sorry. Those are your choices.
We could bring court back into account for us if we need.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, colleagues, would you like to have, I'm going to open the public hearing first, and then, okay. So, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
I don't have any requests to speak. Did anyone wish to speak on this item? No, and I don't have any hands raised online either.
Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and put it back in your hands. Councilwoman Vaccaro.
Yeah, question, Dave, so what justification did the planning commission give for the four docks?
So, basically, it came down to their recognition that if you want to fully and robustly support manufacturing to occur in this building, manufacturing typically, those buildings typically do have truck docks. Staff visited Calbe Foods recently, for example, over in Slana Business Park, they have three truck docks. They're just a normal part of a manufacturing building's operation. And so, with that consideration, you know, that was their recommendation.
Yeah, Councilman Doug?
Yeah, just clarity. The application request is for six truck docks. Over here, we got four truck docks, and then we have four truck docks per building. For clarification, so proposed regulations is four truck docks per building?
Per building.
Or four truck docks, period?
No, for any, for any building, it would be four truck docks, is what the planning commission- commission.
There's two buildings there, so it would be eight.
Eight total.
Eight total. Thank you.
Yeah. If they, if they wanted to add them, they could do eight.
Councilman Tonason.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I wanted to bring this back for, for just that reason, for the planning commission. The planning commission, I watched the meeting, and they said four truck docks, but they are, the way I read the meeting, it was for the entire site. So, that would be two truck docks per, per building. And when we make a decision, you know, the last time this came before us, you know, that option wasn't there, but I had seen it before, so it was a little confusing. So, I apologized to my colleagues for the last time, because I was a bit out of sorts on the, the different options. But, so I've since done quite a bit of homework on it. The, their truck docks are rampant out there. The furniture store has truck docks. The, obviously, the retail store has truck docks. The ingress egress for those isn't, isn't great, but as many times as I've been out there, what I started doing was counting 18-wheelers. And it's very few, because the, the trucks don't want to be there when there's traffic there. That's, that's, their intent is not to be there. Obviously, we would have hours of operation. It depends on how this goes. It would have hours of operation. And, and I guess I, I don't know if, ask David, or David, or David.
David and David.
I'll just ask David.
We can say.
Can you put a timeframe on when they can have a tenant in there? If, is that an option on any building that, that's privately owned?
Are you asking about a sunset period that after a certain date, if no user has come forth? I'd look to the city attorney to know whether or not we could put that.
I just had to say David, and I'd got it right.
Yeah.
My initial thought would be no, unless you actually place it in the ordinance. And I'm not sure, I would need to do more research. I can't give you an answer as I'm sitting here on the case.
Okay. And then, the, the front buildings, the, the building is marketable, in my opinion. But, the front building just sold for $7 million. I guess my next question to David, probably Feinstein, is, could you explain the zoning that we're talking about? Because the, if we put two truck docks, allow two truck docks per building, doesn't mean they have to be there. Can a Panatoni building come in? Would we be changing the zoning to where a 54-foot warehouse could come in there?
Yeah, I think.
Because it doesn't pencil until it does.
Yeah, I think the height limit is 45 feet, if I remember correctly, in that zoning district. The key thing I talked about were design requirements. So, the proposed ordinance before you has requirements that require any buildings, if they rebuild, you know, if Panatoni came in and wanted to put one of those similar buildings, staff was concerned about that. So, it does require a design character equivalent to those existing office buildings, or the buildings that you see over by the library, a much higher quality building. So, you wouldn't just get flat tilt-up warehouse.
Right. No, I'd rather keep the building as it is. But, that's my comments for now. See what the, what the council thinks, and, you know, what your opinions are.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I do have some questions. I think you answered it surrounding, then, the numbers that we're giving, we're giving here for the number of truck docks is really per building, so we should double that. Is that right?
So, I believe the ordinance is written per building. Planning commission may not have been quite as clear as, clearly, there's still some discussion. I should note, I should note that each of those buildings is separately owned, and if you, if you just put a blanket for truck docks in that zoning, for the zoning for both buildings, becomes a question, how do you allocate that between the two buildings if different owners wanted them? So, if you, if, you know, you want four total, you might say two and two, you know, two per building, that kind of thing.
But currently, it's four per building.
Right now, it's written as four per building, yeah.
Four per building?
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, I don't think I'm 100% clear on what the, the full use of this building will be. Do we know?
So, from our standpoint, we don't necessarily know who the tenant would be. What we're looking to do at the request of the applicant and the direction previously from the city council, is to, to expand the range of the types of uses that could go in there, that the owners could market the building to. Right now, with the existing zoning, your focus is more on office-type uses. And there's a range of activities. It does allow some limited commercial activities. It allows research and, I'm sorry, it allows laboratories, things like that. But it doesn't allow manufacturing. It doesn't allow research and development activities. So, really, you're expanding, if you approve one of these ordinances, you're expanding the collection of uses to broaden it to those more sort of industrial types of uses. But ultimately, it's up to the owners to market it and bring in a tenant.
Okay. So, I just need a few seconds to just think it through, because this is where I am. So, this is a vacant building. It's, it needs to be utilized, it needs to be energized. I want it to be successful. I know the community does as well. But, I've almost never have gotten clearer of a message from the community, no, no, no more trucks. I mean, literally, I went to a Christmas party with Santa Claus and kids, and people were talking to me about dislocation and no truck docks. Like, that's how clear it is. That's how much their neighborhoods are talking about it, right surrounding that area. Maybe a reduction? I don't know. I'm still at no, because the community is so clear with a no. So, anyway, thank you for letting me talk it through.
Anybody else?
I, I would, I would put a motion out there for two, but I want to see if there's a way that we can not have, is there any deed restrictions or anything we could put on so that we can't come in there, tear that building down, and put a 45-foot building up?
I, I'm not aware of a way through the zoning you can mandate a deed restriction to that regard, but perhaps the city attorney has additional thoughts?
So, my recommendation in that regard is if you have concerns or questions about making significant changes other than what the planning commission recommended, that you send it back to the commission. Because, as you know, the law's complicated, the law around development is complicated. I would be hesitant, even if I knew that answer off the top of my head, which I do not, I would be hesitant to give a recommendation about whether you could or could not put a deed restriction. That's something that requires more research.
It was clear to me, watching the planning commission, it was, it was four total. So, it was, it was two and two. But, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah. And I think, if I recall, they were not, they did not clarify per building, but because we deal typically with zoning on a parcel-by-parcel basis, the staff interpretation of what they meant was, for any building that, that is out there, for any parcel, it would be four per parcel. But, I agree, they didn't, they didn't clarify that.
And I should state, I was actually covering the planning commission meeting that evening. Usually, it's Ms. Liu from the city attorney's office who covers. I was covering it that night. I'm looking at my notes, and I have it as four total. And I think, I may have even asked for clarification, but I haven't reviewed the video. But I have four here highlighted.
Four, four total as well.
I, I should state, though, very clearly, the, the interpretation of both staff and the city attorney does not matter. It's what the council decides, the planning commission instructed them, that ultimately carries the vote.
So, if, if I were to make them, I, I'd want clarity on if we can put some restrictions in there to stop a big building from coming up. But, you know, I understand the concerns of the residents out there, but I also am a business-friendly council member. I, I think that it's, it's, there's a portion of the building rented, but for the most part, I would like to see commerce out there. So, that's, and I think the truck docks would not, like I said, I've driven out there on a lot, just specifically looking for trucks, and I very rarely see those 18-wheelers rolling around there. So, those are my comments. I've said enough.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you, David, for a great report. And so, it sounds like the planning commission came down, came up with four docks, two docks per building, and perhaps in a way that we can acknowledge the valid concerns of the residents who want, you know, to see limited truck access and, and transportation out there. We can go ahead and take the planning commission's advice, as they've studied this issue very well. So, it won't be eight total, it will be four total. And I think that that might be a way that we can be responsive to all concerned. So, let me make that my motion.
All right. I, I would, does somebody want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
And I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I was discussing an issue with Mr. Feinstein. What is, what is the motion?
Yeah, yeah, let's throw the 45.
Okay. So, the motion, and I'll take your friendly amendment, but the motion is to have a total of four truck docks, meaning two truck docks per building, and that's the limit with Councilman Tonason's friendly amendment to my motion, which is?
The buildings not, not be able to tear that building down and put a big warehouse in there. And I, my thinking on that is that if we limit it to two docks, it's doubtful that'll happen.
Friendly amendment accepted?
And I, and I believe that that limitation would more than likely stop them from tearing down the building to put up an eight-dock building. So.
Councilman Vaccara?
Yeah, for clarification, real quick. So, we're, so the way we're looking at this right now, so, what you're saying, Vice Mayor, is we're looking at four truck docks. So, we're interpreting this as two and two, correct?
That is my intent, yes.
No, that's, no, I, I agree with you. But I'm just saying, I heard earlier, four and four, which I know was not.
Yeah, if I could step in here. I don't think we're interpreting ordinance 2024-01 to be two and two. I think that's the direction we're looking to seek from you. And if that's the direction, then, you know, I, I believe that you could potentially just amend that here on the fly, and then this just comes back for the second reading.
Okay.
At your next meeting. Now, that said, in terms of the 45-foot height limitation, I, I do want to make clear, and again, I think the city attorney's already answered that, in my experience, I'm not aware of our ability to place any restrictions that says a property owner can't tear down their building. Now, we can say you can't build a building beyond 45 feet, which I believe is what that zoning designation right now has as a restriction. But I don't think you're going to have any, any way to come back and say, okay, you, you can't tear down your building, not, not through the zoning code.
But the two-door restriction, we could keep in place.
Two-door restriction. So, two doors per building. You, you could make that motion right now, and that we can bring back.
Okay, that works for me, too. So, I don't know procedurally now, this is the, back to the motion without the friendly amendment, right? Okay. So, the motion, as originally stated, stands, which is to follow the planning commission's recommendation for a total of four docks on these properties, two per property. That is my motion.
So, Madam Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Because we have, sorry.
Go ahead.
Because you have two motions, I want to make sure we're clear. So, what I'm hearing is that you are waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance 2024-02 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, amending section 25.28.5 of chapter 25, article one of the municipal code, also known as a zoning ordinance, to permit scheduled industrial business park uses for office commercial, North Cordelia zone property, south of Business Center Drive, and establish certain design and operating standards, with the amendment that the language that calls for four doors be limited to two doors per building. Is that correct?
That's exactly what I said.
That's what I heard her say. I second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. And so, that's four, four, no, I can't count. Bring in court. Okay, five and one. And, thank you. That, 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 this has been a long process and too long, I know, for the building owner, the project. And so, for that, I apologize. And so, now, before we hang up for the evening.
And I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, just because this doesn't happen very often. So, I just want to state for the record, for the minutes, Madam Clerk, ordinance 2024-01 is just dropped. Since there's no second reading, it does not take effect. It's just considered dropped. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is that it then, Mr. City Attorney? Okay. So, before we hang up, I just want to say that Doris's birthday is tomorrow, and Kate Patrice's birthday is on Friday. So, we're going to sing to them now, because the Vice Mayor and I are in a singing mood. All right. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Kate Patrice and Doris. Happy birthday to you, and many more. And that'll close this up until the 19th. Ching ching!